Okay, we'll open the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'll sign that, thank you. Um, I don't have the agenda in front of me.
Do you want an agenda?
I do, I think I do. Right now, we have an open meeting. Is there any comments from the public before we begin on any particular issue?
Bill?
No? Okay, so our update today is on household hazardous waste.
Yes.
So who is coming before us if you'll...
I thought I'd just say a couple things before we start.
Please, come up, come up, Bill.
Mike, bring all your stuff.
Bring your stuff and you have to identify yourself.
As you probably know, Mike started the first of the year in this new position, and it ought to be a good opportunity to give you an update on what's happening. And also, a silent partner in the county's regional hazardous waste program for several years has been Covanta C-Mass. And people here from Covanta C-Mass have joined us today, and also, Mike will talk about their involvement.
Where are you?
Dan Peters. You been at that?
How do you do? Thanks for having me.
Meg Morris.
Meg Morris, okay. Hey Patty Howard.
How do you do? Nice to meet you, thank you for coming.
They've been very helpful over the last few years in promoting the program and so forth, and we'll get into that discussion a little later.
That's great. Now, Bill, you have to identify yourself just for the cameras, so...
I'm sorry, Bill Clark, Director Cape Cod Extension.
Okay.
And this is the pollen voice.
Oh, it is.
Okay?
Hello, Matt. Hello, Matt. Can I have a look at that?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Mike Newquire. I work for the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension. I am the Household Hazardous Material Program Coordinator. Many of you probably knew Marilyn Lopes, who worked for many years.
I'm sorry.
You want me to go?
Please, please, go right ahead.
Okay, so Marilyn Lopes worked for the Cooperative Extension for many, many years, did a wonderful job, retired. I've been a Barnstable County employee for the past 10 years. I've worked with the AmeriCorps program, with resource development, and with the Cooperative Extension in a different position before I took this position. So I wanted to take the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the Household Hazardous Material Program that the county operates and the things that we do. Many of you probably know that one of our primary missions is to provide, coordinate household hazardous product collections for the communities on Cape Cod. We go, the county goes out to bid for the vendor to provide the cheapest way of collecting this waste for all of the towns. We have an 800 hotline number. The people call it, they get me, and I provide resources and information for individuals and small businesses on how to dispose of their hazardous waste. This brochure and the posters are printed and mailed to every household on Cape Cod, and that is part of the reason why I want Covanta to come today. They have paid for that process in full, saving the county tens of thousands of dollars.
That's excellent, thank you.
So they were very generous of them, they did not have to do that, and they do, so I'd like to recognize them a little bit later. But I would like to talk about three of our other hazardous material programs that the county runs. The first of which is our Sharps container program. Barnstable County provides to 14 of the 15 towns on Cape Cod Sharps containers. They come in one quart, five quart, and two gallon sizes. Most of them are located at either fire departments, health departments, or DPWs. Residents of Cape Cod can go to their respective town location, pick up a container, and return the used container to that location. Barnstable County purchases these containers and pays for their disposal. There are typically, folks who are using these are often diabetic, and the concern is a public health concern because when Sharps are disposed of, and Covanta can talk a little bit about this, even if you're putting it in a laundry detergent bottle and putting it in the garbage, it's not safe. That garbage gets compacted, there are still folks at transfer stations, and there are people at the C-Mass facility that sort through our waste, and one stick can lead up to $20,000 in medical bills. So it's very important that we provide a safe way to dispose of Sharps.
Could I just ask that you, for the audience at home, that you define Sharps? Not everybody might understand.
Sure, thank you for... Sharps are needles, lancets, and any other object that's being stuck through your skin and coming in contact with blood. And the concern being bloodborne pathogens, particularly hepatitis C and hepatitis B, can stay alive on that needle or lancet for two to three weeks, even longer after it's been in your body. So even though some other viruses might die if they're not in a body, a Sharps object is still very dangerous for weeks afterwards. So that's why we want to make sure we're properly disposing of those. The second program...
Excuse me.
Sure.
This is not an exchange program. No. This is not part of any exchange.
No, it's not an exchange program. This is for people who are using Sharps in their home for normal uses, diabetic uses, or maybe they're injecting their dog with some type of vaccine, or, you know, that they would be administering at home.
However, we do have people who are drug addicted on the Cape.
Yes.
And that's another concern because they would be more likely to be carrying a disease that could be transmitted, such as hepatitis B or C. So how has the message gotten out to, or is, are there clinics that deal with drug addicted people that somehow encourage them if they're still using to dispose of these?
Yes, Cape Cod Healthcare and most of the large healthcare facilities, as well as almost every diabetic program on the Cape that I'm aware of, has been contacted about the program. So people who are commonly coming in contact with people who are using needles, whether it's for legal or illicit purposes, are aware that this program is available. And again, Commissioner Doherty pointed out, it's not an exchange, we're not giving needles for needles. It's simply a safe way to dispose of a used needle.
Of a used needle, no matter how it's used?
Right, no matter how it's used.
Right.
No questions asked. The premise is, we know they're dangerous, we don't want them thrown on the beaches, we don't want them thrown in household trash without protection. They need to go in an appropriate container, which is these containers, and they need to be disposed of in a safe and legal manner.
Now, if somebody wanted to receive one of these containers, they would call the Cooperative Extension?
They could go, they could call us, they could go on the county's website and go to the Cooperative Extension website, where we have a brochure that details the locations. Every town has a location with the exception of Falmouth, but Falmouth residents may go to any other town and get them there. There's no restriction on what town you're from.
That's great. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Second program, I'll keep it brief, is our flares program. I don't know if many people are aware, flares are required for boaters to use. It's a United States Coast Guard requirement to have handheld flares in your boat. I believe it's over 16 feet. So the bottom line is, flares contain a substance called perchlorate, which is a salt-like substance that has recently been found to affect thyroids. And we want to make sure that when flares are disposed of, because they have expiration dates, they're put in an appropriate place to dispose of them. Every town has a location that flares are collected at, and they vary, most are fire departments. You can look on our website and we can explain. I don't have time to go through every town, but people who have flares can bring them to their town disposal area, and we go out and collect them and dispose of them. And that's another service that's provided through Barnstable County. And the third...
Before you leave that, you should point out that we have come up with an alternative for flares with perchlorate. I believe that there's an LED flare that's now available to the public, and we're going to encourage people to use that to replace those flares, which are intrusive.
Exactly. Thank you, Bill, for pointing that out. In most instances, LED flares, there's many companies that make them, you can replace, you can replace your handheld flare with an LED. As it stands right now, federal law has not changed, and if you're a boater, you still must have these handhelds. So boaters only. If you have them in your vehicle, most of our first responders, most of our police and fire have switched away from these. You know, nobody wants an open flame on the road. We don't need them. LEDs are much better to use, and they're indestructible, they last up to 10 years. They're a much better alternative than these flares. And if anyone's watching this and would like more information, please contact the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension and get you any information you need on those.
What's the phone number? Thank you.
It'll be the main office. The last program that I'd like to talk about today is our mercury collection program. I think many people are aware of the dangers of mercury. I don't think many people understand how common mercury is to use. It's one of the, maybe the only metal that is liquid at room temperature, which means it has some very interesting and specific purposes. The most common of which, in our household, is in our thermostats. And we have, many people have these, the typically Honeywell brand thermostats, and inside them is a small ampule, and that controls, the mercury in there moves up and down and controls the temperature in your house. That little four-milligram piece of mercury, when added up, creates, can create up to almost 100 pounds of mercury collected each year through the county. So we have a program where if people would like, they can turn in their mercury-containing thermostat, or a digital thermostat, and there's a limit of two per household because of associated costs.
Mike, are you encouraging homeowners to remove that? I know that that's a low voltage thermostat, but there are, you know, bimetal thermostats that are line voltage, and they look about the same as that. So what advice would you give to a homeowner as far as taking that out to replace it?
My advice is that it can be, it's not that difficult of a process, but if you have questions or concerns, you may want to have a HVAC person, a home heating person, come in and do it for you. These thermostats are okay. The mercury in them is contained, and there's no immediate need to rush out and replace them. What I want people to do...
Really? I thought that was...
So it's all kind of interesting.
26 years on the Cape, and I never knew that.
I never, well, I never knew it either. Hey, how come I have a phone? I don't know if it works.
Phone?
Huh?
Wow.
Isn't this interesting? I get ahead.
Hello, Ed.
Hi, Mark.
You may have to call in an airstrike or something on clinical.
She set up speed dials and...
Hello, Bill. Hello, Paul.
Oh, my.
Does this really work? Oh, it does.
Yes, it works.
That's right. John gives...
So, I can call 911 if things get too hot, right?
Does that phone work anymore?
You might be able to dial out, or you might be able to dial in.
If she misbehaves, I'm going to call 911.
Hey, Mike, how are you? Been seeing you in a long time. Congratulations. Thank you very much. How are you doing? Good? I'm awake.
Oh. Kara's going to bring in our...
Thank you.
Certificate thing, man.
Yeah, the whole thing, yeah.
Actually, this is what...
Oh, this is...
It's first thing, man.
Oh, yes.
Will Sheila be joining us today?
Yes.
As far as I know, yeah.
Hello.
Hello, Bill.
You got another minute?
Hey, what were you in? Doing tick checks?
I was around there, yeah.
Oh, you were?
It's like where they put some houses.
You want to sign?
Yeah, we could.
Well, a lot of news out today. We've had a lot of news. So, double check. When you think you're checking out, check again. Yeah.
Well, I got on page two with the census report. That was my plane. Commander only read the census report. It's not going to work.
Do you have any opinion on that?
I haven't seen the paper.
I haven't read the final document yet.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I was so late.
Yeah, what you did with the text.
Let me know.
It's okay, don't worry about it. I got there, I got to the station by 8:30. I had a cup of coffee.
Yeah, that was probably...
I'm writing the summary of it right now. I'll give you the summary.
You probably heard on the news, they turned a remandate for Wellington, so that made the news.
Say what? Oh.
They were reallocating some of their real estate investment trust money, and so they terminated that mandate with Wellington. They have some others.
Oh.
That made the news, because Wellington's a local...
We're going to be spending New Year's Eve together.
I can't wait. Well, actually, I have a few things planned between now and then.
Oh, that's interesting. Well, I'm going to, I'm going to really do my best to get to the next one.
In fact, I'm on my way to Ocean Edge right after the assembly meeting.
Really?
Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce annual meeting. I haven't either, but I'll let you know. That's where it is.
August 5th?
Yeah, they have, they have it two months. And they're working, they have their new advisor, you know, their investment advisor.
Oh, yeah.
And they're working on an allocation study. So they took part one of it, and they talked about, not good news. Right now, they were basing their, you know, they're funded at 2025. They're funded in 2028, they're ahead.
Eight or nine of them chipped in and hired me to video the...
They were assuming that 12%...
And Bill's wife, I ought to put on commission, because she's watched the video about two hundred times. She's told all of her friends.
Now, given the asset...
I've booked several videos, weddings out of this.
20, 40%, with the average being 26 or 27.
Wow, really?
Yeah. Ours is going to look, we don't do ours quite the same way, but...
My younger lives off Cape. She's a teacher down in Baltimore.
So they're going to ask for increased contributions?
No, they're going to have to extend the fund.
Oh, extend the fund? From 28 to something, some other year? Wow.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I was listening to, or else reading. Well, no, I was listening on the news about general orders and their retirement funds and the unions.
Oh, that was just on this morning, on NPR.
Yeah, it was on the diary show.
The retirement fee guaranteed by the Fed?
Well, yes, but they're afraid that's...
No, they're not.
No?
They're in the, what's that, the pension reserve investment thing, whatever they call it. But that's not sufficiently funded.
Oh, no, I heard the woman who's in charge of it saying, but she said, no, that was the FDIC. We can't, oh, we've got to start from there. Okay.
Did you start without Sheila?
Are we going to start without, or we got a couple minutes?
You want to wait five minutes?
I would give her some time. I have not heard that she was...
Yeah, I, no, I told her early this morning. Switch. Oh, in here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to know.
Her new car just pulled in.
Oh, it did?
Yeah. Yep, that's her.
Yeah, you have about two minutes.
And we're going to try to meet in 11 and 12 going forward, to the extent that we can.
Oh, that's good.
Because this is not exactly as suitable for filming as it could be, so...
I feel like I'm in somebody's living room.
Does 11 and 12 have the internet hookup?
I can't tell you, Steve. I think it does, but...
It has one of these hookups.
It has one of those digital phones. Yeah, now with the digital phones, they're all, it's all the same.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello.
Good morning, how are you?
Terrific. Good afternoon, how are you?
Good afternoon. Hello, how are you? Thank you.
I don't know, Bill. I'll have to look through it and see where it is exactly. Hello.
How are you?
It should be in general in order. You know what I mean? If it's top of the, of the summer list, it's top of the pile.
Did you start? We were going to, but we saw your car coming, so we waited. Okay. Steve is checking the driveway out there.
Ready to rock?
Cameras everywhere now. Okay, we'll open the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'll sign that, thank you. I don't have the agenda in front of me.
Do you want an agenda?
I do, I think I do. Right now, we have an open meeting. Is there any comments from the public before we begin on any particular issue? No? Okay, so our update today is on household hazardous waste. So who is coming before us if you'll...
I thought I'd just say a couple things before we start.
Please, come up, come up, Bill.
Mike, bring all your stuff.
Bring your stuff and you have to identify yourself.
As you probably know, Mike started the first of the year in this new position, and it ought to be a good opportunity to give you an update on what's happening. And also, a silent partner in the county's regional hazardous waste program for several years has been Covanta C-Mass. And people here from Covanta C-Mass have joined us today, and also, Mike will talk about their involvement. Dan Peters. You been at that?
How do you do? Thanks for having me.
Meg Morris.
Meg Morris, okay. Hey Patty Howard.
How do you do? Nice to meet you, thank you for coming.
They've been very helpful over the last few years in promoting the program and so forth, and we'll get into that discussion a little later.
That's great. Now, Bill, you have to identify yourself just for the cameras, so...
I'm sorry, Bill Clark, Director Cape Cod Extension. And this is the pollen voice.
Oh, it is. Hello, Matt.
Hello. Can I have a look at that?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Mike Newquire. I work for the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension. I am the Household Hazardous Material Program Coordinator. Many of you probably knew Marilyn Lopes, who worked for many years.
I'm sorry.
You want me to go?
Please, please, go right ahead.
Okay, so Marilyn Lopes worked for the Cooperative Extension for many, many years, did a wonderful job, retired. I've been a Barnstable County employee for the past 10 years. I've worked with the AmeriCorps program, with resource development, and with the Cooperative Extension in a different position before I took this position. So I wanted to take the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the Household Hazardous Material Program that the county operates and the things that we do. Many of you probably know that one of our primary missions is to provide, coordinate household hazardous product collections for the communities on Cape Cod. We go, the county goes out to bid for the vendor to provide the cheapest way of collecting this waste for all of the towns. We have an 800 hotline number. The people call it, they get me, and I provide resources and information for individuals and small businesses on how to dispose of their hazardous waste. This brochure and the posters are printed and mailed to every household on Cape Cod, and that is part of the reason why I want Covanta to come today. They have paid for that process in full, saving the county tens of thousands of dollars. So they were very generous of them, they did not have to do that, and they do, so I'd like to recognize them a little bit later. But I would like to talk about three of our other hazardous material programs that the county runs. The first of which is our Sharps container program. Barnstable County provides to 14 of the 15 towns on Cape Cod Sharps containers. They come in one quart, five quart, and two gallon sizes. Most of them are located at either fire departments, health departments, or DPWs. Residents of Cape Cod can go to their respective town location, pick up a container, and return the used container to that location. Barnstable County purchases these containers and pays for their disposal. There are typically, folks who are using these are often diabetic, and the concern is a public health concern because when Sharps are disposed of, and Covanta can talk a little bit about this, even if you're putting it in a laundry detergent bottle and putting it in the garbage, it's not safe. That garbage gets compacted, there are still folks at transfer stations, and there are people at the C-Mass facility that sort through our waste, and one stick can lead up to $20,000 in medical bills. So it's very important that we provide a safe way to dispose of Sharps.
Could I just ask that you, for the audience at home, that you define Sharps? Not everybody might understand.
Sure, thank you for... Sharps are needles, lancets, and any other object that's being stuck through your skin and coming in contact with blood. And the concern being bloodborne pathogens, particularly hepatitis C and hepatitis B, can stay alive on that, on that needle or lancet for two to three weeks, even longer after it's been in your body. So even though some other viruses might die if they're not in a body, a Sharps object is still very dangerous for weeks afterwards. So that's why we want to make sure we're properly disposing of those. The second program...
Excuse me. This is not an exchange program. No. This is not part of any exchange.
No, it's not an exchange program. This is for people who are using Sharps in their home for normal uses, diabetic uses, or maybe they're injecting their dog with some type of vaccine, or, you know, that they would be administering at home.
However, we do have people who are drug addicted on the Cape.
Yes.
And that's another concern because they would be more likely to be carrying a disease that could be transmitted, such as hepatitis B or C. So how has the message gotten out to, or is, are there clinics that deal with drug addicted people that somehow encourage them if they're still using to dispose of these?
Yes, Cape Cod Healthcare and most of the large healthcare facilities, as well as almost every diabetic program on the Cape that I'm aware of, has been contacted about the program. So people who are commonly coming in contact with people who are using needles, whether it's for legal or illicit purposes, are aware that this program is available. And again, Commissioner Doherty pointed out, it's not an exchange, we're not giving needles for needles. It's simply a safe way to dispose of a used needle.
Of a used needle, no matter how it's used.
Right, no matter how it's used.
Right.
No questions asked. The premise is, we know they're dangerous, we don't want them thrown on the beaches, we don't want them thrown in household trash without protection. They need to go in an appropriate container, which is these containers, and they need to be disposed of in a safe and legal manner.
Now, if somebody wanted to receive one of these containers, they would call the Cooperative Extension?
They could go, they could call us, they could go on the county's website and go to the Cooperative Extension website, where we have a brochure that details the locations. Every, every town has a location with the exception of Falmouth, but Falmouth residents may go to any other town and get them there. There's no restriction on what town you're from.
That's great. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Second program, I'll keep it brief, is our flares program. I don't know if many people are aware, flares are required for boaters to use. It's a United States Coast Guard requirement to have handheld flares in your boat. I believe it's over 16 feet. So the bottom line is, flares contain a substance called perchlorate, which is a salt-like substance that has recently been found to affect thyroids. And we want to make sure that when flares are disposed of, because they have expiration dates, they're put in an appropriate place to dispose of them. Every town has a location that flares are collected at, and they vary, most are fire departments. You can look on our website and we can explain. I don't have time to go through every town, but people who have flares can bring them to their town disposal area, and we go out and collect them and dispose of them. And that's another service that's provided through Barnstable County. And the third...
Before you leave that, you should point out that we have come up with an alternative for flares with perchlorate. I believe that there's an LED flare that's now available to the public, and we're going to encourage people to use that.
Before you leave that, you should point out that we have come up with an alternative for flares with perchlorate. I believe that there's an LED flare that's now available for the public, and we've encouraged people to use that to replace those flares which are intrusive.
Exactly. Thank you, Bill, for pointing that out. In most instances, LED flares, there's many companies that make them, you can replace, you can replace your handheld flare with an LED. As it stands right now, federal law has not changed, and if you're a boater, you still must have these handhelds. So boaters only. If you have them in your vehicle, most of our first responders, most of our police and fire have switched away from these. You know, nobody wants an open flame on the road. We don't need them. LEDs are much better to use, and they're indestructible, they last up to 10 years. They're a much better alternative than these flares. And if anyone's watching this and would like more information, please contact the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension. I'll get you any information you need on those.
What's the phone number for that?
Be the main office. The last program that I'd like to talk about today is our mercury collection program. I think many people are aware of the dangers of mercury. I don't think many people understand how common mercury is to use. It's one of the, maybe the only metal that is liquid at room temperature, which means it has some very interesting and specific purposes. The most common of which, in our household, is in our thermostats. And we have, many people have these, they're typically Honeywell brand thermostats. And inside them is a small ampule, and that controls, the mercury in there moves up and down and controls the temperature in your house. That little four-milligram piece of mercury, when added up, creates, can create up to almost 100 pounds of mercury collected each year through the county. So we have a program where if people would like, they can turn in their mercury-containing thermostat or a digital thermostat, and there's a limit of two per household because of associated costs.
Mike, are you encouraging homeowners to remove that? I know that that's a low voltage thermostat, but there are, you know, bimetal thermostats that are line voltage and they look about the same as that. So what advice would you give to a homeowner as far as taking that out to replace it?
My advice is that it can be, it's not that difficult of a process, but if you have questions or concerns, you may want to have a HVAC person, a home heating person, come in and do it for you. These thermostats are okay. The mercury in them is contained, and there's no immediate need to rush out and replace them. What I want people to do and to realize and think about is, as you renovate your home, as you replace things in your home, if you are going to replace your mercury-containing thermostat, do not throw it in the trash. It's actually now a state law, it's illegal to dispose of mercury in the trash. So I would encourage them to consult their home heating expert about what is the best option for them. I like digital thermostats because I can program them, so it controls the temperature in my house even when I'm not there. I don't need it to be warm in the winter when I'm not there, so. And the other exchange that we have is for mercury-containing thermostats, thermometers, rather. So the thermometer is a digital thermometer, we can trade those in as well. And we have replacements at each of the household hazardous waste collections. People want to come there, they can come to our office, and we can, and do the exchange there as well.
Now, the other item that you didn't mention that has mercury in it and is the, even though it helps in energy savings, it has a glow, it has a carbon footprint, and that is the-
CFLs.
The CFL lights.
So compact fluorescent lights and the traditional longer bulb fluorescent lighting, both have mercury vapors in them. Again, we were talking about the interesting properties of mercury. You know, there are hazards in almost every product we have.
Right.
So a CFL, compact fluorescent light, the Curly Q ones that many people now have, they're energy efficient, have a very small amount of mercury vapor in them. Which means, again, there, you should be conscious that it does have mercury, and you should dispose of it properly. Every transfer station on Cape Cod has a mercury shed. You can bring your CFL to it, and they will take that. There's no fee associated with it. Many hardware stores are also taking them back now.
And what does, what does a person do if they have dropped their CFL and they, it's now on the floor? Is there a process of getting rid of it there?
There's a fairly detailed process which you can find rather easily. If you went onto the Environmental Protection Agency website, it will detail every little step. In case I miss a step, basically what I want to explain is that the amount of mercury released is very miniscule, but it is a vapor. We ask that people immediately leave the room and open their windows for, open their windows, leave the room for about 15 minutes.
I see.
And it dissipates, and then you want to use a piece of tape to try to pick up any of the glass shards, and bring those to the transfer station where you typically be disposing of it.
That's great information. I didn't know all of those details. So thank you.
So again, it is a hazardous product, but it's one that has a usefulness, and so we have to balance cost and benefit.
Right, right.
So those are really, there's a lot to talk about, and I wanted to try to get through that as quickly as possible. But if you, commissioners, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd like to introduce Covanta.
And that's fine with us? Okay, that's great.
Okay. Okay, so we have members, we have three representatives from Covanta C-Mass, which is the waste-to-energy facility where many, much of our waste on Cape Cod ends up on the Rochester Wareham Line. This is-
Come forward.
Dan Peters.
Meg Morris.
Meg Morris. And Patty Howard. Again, they have been instrumental in paying for our hazardous, household hazardous material brochure, sending it out. They've given tens of thousands of dollars each year to our program to support it, and they do a tremendous amount of work with mercury, and they're a wonderful partner. And we sincerely appreciate what they've been able to do for us, so. I don't know if you have any questions for them, otherwise we can-
I'm sure we, I'm sure we do. I know that we have a, I know that we have a certificate of appreciation that we would like to give you. I mean, it's the least we can do since you, you help us in such a great way.
They give us money, that's very well.
Yes, and for that you deserve at least this. It's our heartfelt thing. Could you say?
Laurel and Hardy.
Yeah, right. So I just want to, I guess I could, I could, well, I can, I can give that to you for the group. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And we appreciate your partnership and your involvement in this, and I'm sure you'd like to add a-
Well, I wanted to just kind of emphasize, I head up all the environmental programs for Covanta C-Mass and the whole family of facilities that comes with it. It's a facility that handles most of the solid waste in the trash off of Cape Cod in 60-plus towns in southeast Mass and Cape Cod. And all of the programs that the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension is doing and have been doing really help to just prevent unwanted things from ending up in the trash. Whether that's Sharps, or household hazardous wastes, or mercury, or any of those things, they really help us maintain compliance and just make sure there's no hazards associated with that. I think the commissioners should know that we look at, and I get a chance to, visit with a number of recycling organizations throughout the Commonwealth. It's my opinion, and it's really backed up by numerous reports and data that we submit to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, that Cape Cod Cooperative Extension is by far the, I believe, the top-rated recycling organization in the Commonwealth. The data that they generate on recycling of all types, whether it's just normal recycling, household hazardous waste events, and certainly mercury, which is our specific focus on this program, is really second to none. So I think it's important for the public to know that, and for you folks to recognize that. Their efforts really make an enormous difference, and you'd be surprised at how much the recycling can vary from town to town. And it, and it really comes about with, you know, dedicated, committed people like this really make all the difference in the world.
Well, this is your day, Bill, and, and, no, that's great to hear, and thank you. I think we all feel that way as well. But it's nice, it's nice that it's being recognized beyond the Cape borders.
I have a question about recycling. Do you think that there is better recycling from communities where the citizens have to take their own trash and recyclables to a transfer station?
Excellent question.
Or whether a curbside? Is there a higher recycling ratio with curbside?
And Patty, you can, you can jump in. Certainly, you know, if, if the more folks are focused on their trash and where it goes and where it needs to go, the higher the recycling rates, so.
Education.
Yeah, education.
It really is, and people need to understand that even though we use the trash as a fuel to make electricity, you must recycle first. You must recycle first. That's, you have to have a strong recycling program. It's environmentally and economically the best way to go. So that's why we love when, when programs are as successful as they are down here, and that's why we want to continue to be good partners, because we want you to be even more successful. You need to recycle first. What's left over, we use as a fuel to make clean renewable electricity.
And that also comes from looking at the materials themselves, and what materials can be reused prior to our final use, which is producing a fuel. And so if you look at the traditional recyclables, glass and paper and plastic and metal, those all have a much higher use, and so you really should, number one, in Massachusetts, it's the law. But, but number two, if you just think about it a second, about conserving our resources, you want to reuse them as much as you can before they hit the point where you just can't use it anymore for that purpose, but you can use it for a fuel. And so again, it is, it is very important. And I agree with Dan's comment, when you go to a transfer station, the reality is you're kind of looking at all those different bins, and you're going, oh, okay, I have to put my recycling here and my reusables here. If you just put it curbside, it tends to be an out-of-side-out-of-mind. You're just putting it on the curb, and it goes away, and you can forget about it. This way, you're a little closer to your garbage, which you should be.
I understand that the market for recyclables has decreased over the last few years. Is there any chance that that will increase anytime in the near future?
It's actually starting back up again. It's not, for instance, the paper and plastic market, our big market was China. And, and when the economy tanked, everybody's economy tanked. But they are seeing some evidence that it's starting to pick up again. So, you know, we're not up to $120 a ton for paper right now, but we're not exactly paying to get rid of it either. So it's, it comes back, it's cyclical. It's always been.
Could you make the point, I'd, I'd like to make the point too, that whatever you're paying a ton to get rid of your trash, that's the end, that's the most you're ever going to pay. Recyclables, even if you have to pay to get rid of your recyclables, you're never going to pay as much as you do to get rid of trash, because they still have some value, they've been sorted. So even if you're not environmentally, even if you don't care about the environment, there are people that are there, I have, you know, spoken with them. If you want to talk dollars and cents, dollars and cents is, if you have to pay $50 a ton, or $100 a ton, or $150 a ton to get rid of trash, it will always be cheaper to get rid of sorted glass, or sorted paper, or sorted plastics, and that's the bottom line. So, you know, if you want to keep costs down, that's really the smart thing to do.
Good point. Thank you for that.
Yeah, keeping things out of the waste field, you know, of course, is very important. I think that's a point that you're making. I think everybody knows that recycling on aluminum can versus the amount of energy it takes to create on aluminum can, I think that's a lesson we all have. However, back in the day when I was paying more attention to solid waste management or trash to energy, there was a concern that American trash in particular, as opposed to European or Asian trash, had a higher, had a lower BTU content because of kind of the amount of moisture, you know, that was, that was still contained in it, which meant that when it went to a station for conversion, it had to be enriched. Now, how are you managing that particular item? Because enrichment, you know, means you're adding, you know, you're adding a fossil fuel back to the trash in order to get to the amount of BTU content you need, in order to create steam and in order to, you know, to turn to turbines.
Quite frankly, we see almost the opposite now with the way the trash is. It's almost too high a heat or BTU content. And if you think about it, a number of things being recycled, like food waste being composted or yard waste typically had a lot of moisture content to it, that's being composted now. And those are being separated out, and you're still left with a number of higher BTU things, plastics, for example. Plastic packaging is a classic example where it's high BTU heat content. So we see the, actually, the opposite approach. The trash is burned almost too hot, we have to kind of hold it back a little bit, so.
Okay, well, that suggests that your recycling and your sorting have been working to increase the efficiency of our trash.
Well, it's the, it's the success of your recycling. It's, it happens on the Cape. Before, it's all the work that Mike and Bill and everybody on the Cape does, that's where the success starts.
Now, did you have another?
No, but you didn't know you were going to have to educate us. No, no, no. And now that I have you here, I feel like, oh my gosh, there's so many questions that I didn't even think about.
Well, and, and, you know, keeping some of the things out of the waste is just super critical because C-Mass is a shredding plant, so we shred the waste and it's burned. And, and, you know, I've had to help respond to when somebody is cleaning out a jam shredder, and they get a needle stick, that is a very scary thing for, you know, a technician to have to kind of go through. So keeping some of these things out of the waste really helps us hugely.
Now, didn't, a couple of years back, there was some sort of tank that was put in a green trash bag, so it just was dumped as regular trash, and it was going through your system, and I'm not sure if it was your system or another.
Probably propane tanks.
The propane tanks. And those can explode or create fire when they're being-
Yes, certainly, because C-Mass recovers a lot of the metals and materials out of the waste and shreds it, it's vulnerable to if there's improper things put in. Propane tanks are some of the largest problems, things that we have. Over the last 10 years, C-Mass has, on its own, recycled close to 100,000 propane tanks out of the waste stream. So about 10,000 tanks a year. So what we see from communities that maximize the recycling is we don't see those problem things in the waste. We don't see somebody trying to throw out a steel I-beam in a dumpster, which we've had to pull those out of the shredders from time to time. Propane tanks and gasoline dabs and very improper things like that. So the higher degree of recycling we see in a community, the better it is for us, and quite frankly, the easier it is to process that trash to create renewable power. So it's a win-win-win all the way around.
Now, I know that in our transfer station, just, they have all these nice words, names, they, you know, they have amnesty days. So on those days, I mean, it usually costs, say, a $10 fee to bring in a computer that's basically obsolete, or a television, or a mattress, or something like this. So you have these amnesty days that allow people, and I think that that's what causes some people to throw these propane tanks. They don't want to have to pay the five, or, you know, maybe, or they might be visitors, and they don't want to have to pay the dump fee and then the recycle fee. So, so that's something to encourage people, even as visitors here now that our summer tourists are coming to. It'd be better even just to leave it near the, by the dump, would they not?
Well, and we used to encourage the truck haulers to, we had offered a bounty. You know, if you bring a propane tank, we'll pay you to separate it out from the load.
Oh, I see, okay.
And so, all those things help. Nowadays, especially if you go by a grill, it does not automatically come with a propane tank, which is a good thing.
Right, right.
In fact, the program we like the best is Blue Rhino and those, where you never really own the propane tank, you just exchange it for a full one for an empty one. That works the best, actually.
Right, yeah, and that's, they have that a lot down here. And just tell us again how your energy is, I mean, how the trash is converted into energy. You have paper and plastic, and does that include plastic bags, like from the supermarket?
Yeah, it will, yeah.
So we can roll this up in this-
That is an unhappy woman right there. He's trying to get rid of them, and I even have all these shopping bags, and of course, there's always that one time that you forget to put them back in the car, and you're stuck with paper or plastic.
Yeah.
So-
Well, essentially, the trash is dumped on the tipping floor, and we have to inspect every load for any banned items by the state or any improper items. And then it's fed up into some conveyors, goes through big shredders, which are equivalent to car shredders. In fact, our fuel side supervisor will say it'll shred a Volkswagen if you fed it in there, or a telephone pole, but-
Not that we encourage anyone to try.
No, right.
Yes. But, and then it's shredded, and then it feeds to the, then it's essentially like any other power plant. It's, but the fuel is solid waste. So then that's combusted in the boilers, it heats up water in a steam loop, it creates steam, and that goes into a turbine- a turbine that turns it to turbine and makes electricity. So, it's identical to any other type of power plant, except that what's creating the steam is recovered the residual solid waste.
It's worth going on a tour.
I was just going to offer.
Yeah.
We'd love to have folks come from you folks as a board, the folks in the room, the whole Cape Cod, frankly, the folks watching.
Things to do on a rainy day.
Is there a day that you're open for that? I know that the NITIA power plant, for example, they used to have a day you could go and tour the plant.
I prefer Tuesdays and Thursdays, but I'll be flexible. I'll even give up a Saturday to come in every now and again to give a tour.
If there's a special group or...
Yeah. Generally speaking, I've taken one or two people through. I try not to have large groups just because some of the control, it's not built for big tours. So, you know, try and keep them small. It's, it will give you a much deeper appreciation for recycling when you come and see.
I bet.
It really, there's much work to do still.
Do you offer this to schools?
I don't, I don't like below ten.
Right.
Yeah. You know, short attention spans and trash plants are not a good mix. So, you know, so, yeah, I prefer to keep age 10 and above. But, yeah, I'm completely willing to work. I get Cub Scouts to come in. They earn their energy badge.
How would they make that reservation?
They can call me.
And your name is?
My name is Patty Howard.
Howard, okay.
You can email me at phoward@covantaenergy.com, C-O-V-A-N-T-A-energy.com. Or you can call me at area code 508-291. 4400 is the main number, and they will find me. Or 4427 is my direct line.
That's great.
Okay. I look forward to seeing you. Wear long pants, sensible shoes.
Yeah. You don't want me slipping and sliding.
I also thought it would be worth noting that you produce enough electricity for about 40,000 homes, is it?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand. Amazing.
To just put it in perspective, the CMAS processes about 3,000 tons of trash a day. And with our sort of other subsidiary facilities that go with the Amelie's CMAS plant, the landfill and the transfer stations, it's probably more, we're handling about 4,500 tons of trash a day. The five boroughs in New York City would generate about 12,000 tons of trash a day. So, we're handling roughly something on the equivalent of like 40% of New York City's trash.
Have you ever been to Arthur Kill?
I'm sorry?
Have you ever been to Arthur Kill?
I haven't. I haven't, unfortunately.
It's an enormous dump.
Yes. Where landfill operations started.
There's a generating station. I don't think it's connected with the landfill, but I was in there, you know, doing some corrosion analysis. And one of the things you do, you go to the, I was at the tube sheet, and you check to see what, in Brooklyn. And I'm looking in there, and the guy says, I wouldn't put my finger in it, which is what you typically do. He says, because across East River from where it was, was a hospital where they used to dump needles, and it'd come through the tube sheet. So, I said, I thought he was kidding. So, he pulls out his needle dogs and pulls out about six needles out at the end of the thing. So, needles can be very, you know, very hard to check.
Absolutely.
So, if I could just bring us back to mercury just for a second, because that's really what my focus is. One of the other things that we've done recently is to support legislation here in Massachusetts that would actually put some of the responsibility for mercury-bearing products back on the manufacturers. And Massachusetts is actually one of the more progressive states, the most progressive state is Maine. And so, we should, we should try and beat Maine at some point. But Massachusetts is quickly catching up on what's called product stewardship, where you look at what materials were put into the product in the first place, and particularly if they are toxic materials, which, you know, Mike is right, they still have a use. But we don't want mercury floating around any more than it is. What the bill does is make the producers responsible for setting up an even better collection program and recycling program. So, there is legislation right now on thermostats and also on fluorescent lamps. So, that again, and then that helps take the burden off local government. And so, and then Mike was telling me there's an e-waste bill, which is electronics waste, that's out there, which I'm going to take a look at and see if our company can support it as well. I think we can. We just like to read the fine line first. But that's something that Covanta is really stepping up to the plate on. It's important to us. We don't want it at our facilities, but it's also important to us as citizens and residents that we don't want it mishandled.
Just a piece of advice, all your streetlights out here are controlled by, you know, by photovoltaic cells. Okay. And they all, and if they're chemically operated, they're, you know, it's, I mean, it's in there. I know that for years, you know, utilities used to just dump them in a dumpster, and then they would go to the landfill. And I'm wondering if you're, because there's a lot of, because of energy efficiency, there's a lot of photo-controlled devices that are out there that are turning, you know, turning lights on and off. And I think people should be aware that the way of manufacturing, there's a little cell of this cambric sulfate in it. It should be disposed of properly.
I love that. And I, the only reason I know a tiny bit about it is because of one of the mercury companies that we deal with. And they are always adding, that's part of the list of things that they will recycle for us. But back to Ms. Flynn's comment, early on, education is key. And again, the more that we can educate people about all of these issues, the more likely that people will dispose of things properly or manage them. I'll just even call it manage them properly. And so, again, it's great having the cooperative extension here as really an education arm that is doing this. And it's great to be here today that maybe some folks will watch this presentation and think about it.
It's only our third, so we don't know what size. We're hoping it grows.
That is our desire, that we're educating not only ourselves about county government, but the citizens as well. My final question is on plastic packaging. You know, the very, you know, you're trying to get into that item you bought, and, you know, even to get scissors or something, you're almost cutting yourself. Does that go into the plastics? How do you recycle that? Or do you? I know that when those packages first came into being, I had friends, I lived in another state, that would just pay the money and package it up and send it back to the company because they said, if they're going to do this to me, I'll do it back to them. Do it back to them because they were so conscious of the, you know, just throwing all of this stuff out. What, how, which bin do I put something like that in? Or is there a bin for those types of plastics out there right now?
Doesn't it depend on your town and what sort of recycling program each town has? There's usually a mark. If it is a recyclable plastic, it's got the number in it. And each town will have their own program, whether it's a single stream or, you know, a separated or dual stream or...
So, people should be conscious of that in their, in their own transfer station and what's on the package itself.
Absolutely.
And then they can separate that properly.
What about Styrofoam?
My understanding is it's not a recyclable item at this point.
Packing peanuts, the best thing, the best thing you can do with packing peanuts is call the local UPS store or any of those mail box stores. And a lot of them will take them from you because then they'll turn around and just use them instead of buying new ones. They'll just use them to ship off another package. And actually, they've gotten pretty good about that. Now, that does not include, for instance, when you buy a computer and you have that, that big piece of Styrofoam. That is not currently recyclable, unfortunately.
That's the one, is like, is that the stuff that expands around?
Yeah, it's like, or it's like molded around.
Some of it is molded, right.
I wondered about that.
Well, the new computers, I just happened to buy a laptop and it had cardboard instead. I was really pleased. I opened up the box, and actually, the computer was stabilized by using two cardboard pieces on the end. And so, it really was much more effective than trying to get rid of that Styrofoam afterwards. The packaging industry and manufacturers really are all starting to improve. I like to, I like to always give people a chance to improve. I mean, yes, we did some strange things in the past, but the reality is now that all of our awareness is heightened, we are starting to do things differently. We're not perfect by any stretch of the imagination. But I think we need to encourage companies that do the right thing. And so, I did. I happened to buy a Hewlett Packard. So, I wrote him, I wrote him a little note, and I said, thank you so much for not using Styrofoam packaging. Now, I didn't get an answer or anything. I felt better.
Right.
But somebody who read my little note probably felt better.
Right, right.
So, but again, we have to encourage business and manufacturers to continue to increase, I should say, to decrease their packaging.
Right. There is a way of going about that.
Is there anything else?
One thing we didn't mention, if I could, over the last few years, we have co-sponsored trainings at Covanta CMAS at their facility for town employees who work at the transfer stations. And they've, Covanta CMAS has hosted these meetings, and it's been invaluable. So, all the employees, it was a great regional effort to have not only the training, but the different town employees get together and chat about, gee, how do you do it in your town versus my town?
That's...
It's unbelievable. Like, the coffee hour, or not hour, but coffee break conversations are sometimes invaluable.
Exchange of information is invaluable.
And does that help, I'm sure it would be helpful for all of us to have more of a standardized system across the Cape so that each transfer station recycles these items, such as the packaging, in a very similar way so that if towns ever want to share those, I know that some towns in the outer Cape have shared, talking about instead of keeping their transfer station open seven days a week during the summer, and it gets to be costly five days, but they'll rotate those other two days so that people from those towns can go to, you know, see if they can share costs. It would be beneficial to standardize those systems.
Right. If everyone would, exactly. If they're all doing exactly the same thing, then if I'm, if I'm in Brewster, but I get to use the Orleans Transfer Station, I know it's the same process. They're still collecting ones and two bottles or whatever the situation is. Right.
There's a question in the, oh, no. Okay. Is there any questions from the public? And I just want to recognize, we have, is this an AmeriCorps?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have recognized. Corinda Walls designed the Household Hazardous Product brochure, the, oh, no.
Great.
So, I should give her full credit for that one to every household on Cape Cod.
Wonderful.
Services. Thank you.
Corinda works with Mike two days a week, and so, she's been valuable.
That's terrific. Well, thank you.
One final thing. There is, there has been a solid waste advisory committee made up of the transfer station managers throughout the Cape. Are you active, is that, how active is that? And are you participating in it?
We actually participate a lot in the, there's a solid waste advisory committee that DEP has up at Boston that includes kind of the entire Commonwealth. So, I'm a frequent attendee at that. We haven't interacted yet with the Cape.
On the Cape, I haven't. I don't know if there, there may be people from CMAS that do.
I'm just hopeful that, you know, the Cape Cod Commission, which had, had someone that was actively supporting it, and we've now, we do have a commitment to the Cape Cod Commission to continue to pursue it. I'm sure that they were in communication with, you know, with Bill, you know, with regard to what's going on here. But I want to make sure that people are aware that the, you know, the question that our chair has raised, that the opportunity for that type of communication is available through an existing, you know, through an existing committee. And hopefully, the towns are taking advantage of it.
I know I've met several representatives of the commission. Andrea Adams is a frequent attendee up at the DEP Boston meetings.
Well, the Cape Cod Commission has actually funded some regional efforts on the part of the towns to see how they can work together on the whole picture of waste management. So, that is ongoing right now.
Right.
Yes.
Well, I thank you so much. It's very, very much a pleasure meeting you, and thank you for educating us.
Is it .net or .com?
For the, email is .com.
.com, okay. Well, we'll have to...
Could you give us that website address just one more time?
Well, my email, the website is covanta, www.covantaholding.com.
Or you can type in Covanta Energy.
Covantaenergy.com. It'll come right up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's really been enlightening. Yes, it will now have a closer relationship with our trash. Thank you. And good to meet you, Mike. And you, thank you.
We had a tour last year where we went down to a couple of collection points. One was the fire taking, or West Front Fire Department.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to use my son's notes on the wall.
Maybe he can.
Oh, good. Oh, the Sharps. Great.
The two fire departments, that's the one I was...
Maybe I'll call up.
He's had a great job.
He was involved at one point in time because it was his.
What else are you saying? You live in Born.
Well, I think they used flare.
Okay.
We have to send a letter on the funding.
Oh, okay.
For AmeriCorps.
Oh, yes. All right.
We do need to send it to Congress, isn't that right?
Yes, yes, yes.
No, this happens every year.
I know. That's what I saw on Senator Kennedy's.
Thanks, Mike. Nice to see you. We missed you at, I know, you were having a baby. The thing they did over in Yarmouth here, the great farm.
Well, we received an email from someone who suggested, I thought of you. But we have an email somewhere about...
Well, I tell people about that story.
Okay.
And you were working on the Welfley House.
Well, you're in the best part, although you have to get up to...
So, you've come a long way, baby.
It's not far from here.
Oh, yes. Well, I'm going here this weekend.
Well, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I went to college for two years at Saint Mary's. But anyway, I love, I love Indiana. I love living there. It's really amazing.
Yeah, I bet you, and I'm sure they miss you.
I know. Yeah. I mean, to me, I'm like wondering if it's like, like we were talking about kind of our passion to your trash, you're going to have some feeling about what it would be where it goes. I'm wondering if it's easier, you might get relaxed, seriously, people take it, you know what I mean?
To generate from Southern Indiana, it's so much different.
Did you go, if you get this, you go back as one?
I used to, I lectured at Purdue a couple of times up at the...
I'm an Indiana fan.
Join everybody, or I wouldn't say join everybody in Hating on the Cape.
That's right.
Well, thank you guys.
Very good meeting you. Okay. And thank you for all your work. All right. We'll get that letter off.
Great. Thank you so much, you guys.
Okay.
Bye.
Okay, I guess, is there, are we, we're still on? I believe we are.
Okay.
Is there, there is no other comment from public or... Okay. On our, we have to do some signing, and then we have our actions here. Everyone has read through these. Do you have questions?
On Kevin Galligan, I guess, he is giving a course over the, or season, yeah. And what he's asking for, as I understand, is an exemption so that he can get paid for doing that.
That's correct. Yeah. So, it's a disclosure process in 268A. So, if you just note that he has so disclosed.
Okay.
I don't see anything else in here for me.
No. I read it. Yes.
So, I'd be happy to move on.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So...
Want to start signing?
And I will start. Have you done these?
No.
Okay. Is there any...
Well, I wanted to update the commissioners on the, my activities of the last week regarding the rest area in the six. As you probably know, the, we all know that the Assembly of Delegates did not approve that section of our budget that provided for the $25,000 from the county to fund it. So, it appeared that there was no, no solution in place for keeping it open come July 1. We did agree several weeks ago that because we had the funding through this fiscal year, that we would continue to operate it until July 1. So, then I was talking to, you know, various people in various towns and who create, who had great dismay about the fact that it might not be open and the impacts that it would have for tourists and even the lower Cape Chambers, thinking that they would have people coming into their businesses, their B and Bs or inns or whatever, and find that people would be rather annoyed that this was closed without any notice. So, we got a group of people together, some people from all the chambers, from... And we even had the State Highway, Mass Highway person who's responsible for the six employees from Mass Highway who actually take care of all of the mowing operations on Route Six. And so, he participated and we met three times. We met on Wednesday where we looked at the problem and decided that we had to only look at a short-term solution for the summer. We couldn't solve the problem going forward. So, we agreed to separate our efforts and only look at what we had to do for the remainder of the summer through October, or at least through the weekend after Columbus Day. And then in the fall, we would get back together again and look at how we might be able to solve it on a more permanent level. So, what we came up with after much discussion and we looked at all of the costs, we had John here from Facilities Management and Mark, and we looked at what it had cost us last year, what we had planned to spend this year, all the implications, Mass Highway, how they could help us, the Cape Cod Chamber, Wendy Northcross was here and she looked at ways where she might be able to help us out, although the Chamber, the Cape Cod Chamber actually manages the rest area on Route 25.
Route 25.
Twenty-five, yeah. So, and that's a huge cost to the Cape Cod Chamber to run that operation. They see about four to 500,000 people a year in that rest area. So, anyway, what we came up with was there just isn't any money. And while some of the Chambers thought they might be able to contribute sometime during the course of the summer, depending upon how the economy is, they didn't feel that they could come up with anything right now. The Cape Cod Chamber, however, did agree to come up with $2,500. So, we had a budget, we narrowed the budget down to 22,005, and then we subtracted from that the 2,500 that the Cape Cod Chamber would provide, and we ended up with $20,000. And where are we going to get it from? So, we decided to put together a grant to the Economic Development Council.
Here at the county.
For some license plate funds, yes, here at the county. So, on Friday, that's what we did, and we met and we outlined the entire proposal. And Dan got it together, he helped us with it, and it went to the, all the EDC members Monday of this week. And so, we'll be meeting with them Thursday at their meeting tomorrow at four o'clock. And hopefully, we will get a positive response. It is a one-time solution. It isn't like we're asking for it on a continuous basis. So, I'm hoping that they will be very responsive. We gave them a lot of information in the proposal. We gave them a budget, you know, with the actual costs are for the contract that we have to have in terms of the dump, the waste removal, actually, from the containers. And the cleaning, which is another part of it, and then the actual personnel costs. So, we hope that they'll be responsive and then we can get through till October and then we'll meet again and try to see if we can come up with a long-term solution. So, that was the result of that effort.
Okay, now, let me see if I understand. We're saying that we're going to give a grant, and we're going to give a grant to whom?
Well, it would be, we would set up a separate fund because we don't have any right now county money. So, we would set up a separate fund in the county's funding, and the EDC would grant, basically, the county the money to operate the rest area for the remainder, well, for this, this season, I guess is what we call it.
If we do that, how carefully will we account for our actual cost to moving this?
Well, we, actually, well, as Pat said, John was there, John Blaisdell, and we were pretty, we know exactly how much it costs to run this. John's got folders and from every year that we've operated this thing, so we have a pretty good idea how much it costs.
How many years have we operated this?
Since 90, yeah, 16 years.
Fifteen years.
The county's been doing it all these years.
We've been doing, we've been stepping up to the plate through the EDC License Plate Fund, but that was the Commissioner's policy decision that we kept this place open and running, so, yeah.
Because, see, the monies were made available in the budget, and then the county operated this facility during the course of the summer. So, there's really no change in how it's going to be operated, but we want to look in the long term to look at other solutions for operating it other than the county.
It is on a state highway, right?
That's correct. The state used to operate it and they walked away from it.
I thought they walked away in about 16 years ago. It was closer to about nine years ago.
Well, Bob Dubois can give you a better history because he's been there for the entire span of time. And I think it was in 1990, I think, that Bob said, if I recall correctly, that the state said, "We're not doing this anymore." And then between 90 and like 94, I started here in 94, I think 90, 95, Bob somehow pieced it together. He did this, he did that, he did whatever he could, Bob Dubois, the Yarmouth Chamber, he did whatever he could to kind of keep it. And then the whole thing kind of fell apart. And then we stepped in in 95.
Right.
And did it on our own. And then I'm thinking 97, when the license plate start, we say, "Wait a minute, let's use, that's for tourism, certainly is legitimate, let's use some of that to fund."
But our history with this is not, you know, is within the period of time that I've been serving, and I believe I was on the EDC when we agreed to it. But even at the beginning, it wasn't intended it would be a perpetual funding of this.
I'm not sure what perpetual means, but 15 years is a pretty long time.
It is. Now, if I, if we can just belabor the topic a little bit further, and when the Assembly took the money, we, the Commissioners did put the money into the EDC.
We had intended to fund it.
Yes. And they removed that money, the Assembly. Not really, some people didn't really quite understand that that's what was going to be the result of that action.
I think their intent was, if you recall the discussion, remember, we, because of our financial situation, ours being the county, we said, "All right, we are going to fund a portion of the EDC's operations cost out of the license plate," which we had done before.
Which we have always done.
And we did a portion, and let's say it's 50/50. It was about 50/50. It was a complex formula that I came up with. At the Assembly, they said, "No, no, we're going to pay for all of the operating costs of the EDC out of the license plate." And as a, I guess I'd call it a replenishment, they said, "All right, well, let's eliminate that funding for the rest area, paying, the EDC, the license plate paying for the rest area. That way, that will replenish the license plate account." And I don't think they, they didn't, they saw one side of the ledger, which was the revenue side, and they took the money away on the license plate for the rest area side, which replenished the license plate account, you're right. But they didn't see the other side of the ledger, which provided for the actual money that you could, the authorization to spend the money to clean the rest area.
That's right.
So, that's what happened.
Which is, so they didn't understand that. And then at our last meeting, when they were voting on if we had that half cent, Pat and I were there, you had to leave a little bit early. Yeah, and so, I had proposed, they were deliberating, like, you know, if we give them, if we go on the higher side of the one cent, then they're going to have this money they don't know what to do with. So, I said.
Didn't say it, did you?
I did. I said, "In light of this, I think that you should consider that, you know, you didn't, that the funding wasn't there for this, and, you know, we would consider, you know, putting the excess funds to solving this issue for this year, and then we could look at the..."
If that money showed up and if the market improved and if we, and if we actually collected all of that money, then it would be a surplus money. The idea of an automatic faucet that turns on and that money comes in is, you know, is something that.
It fell onto the ears.
They rejected it out of hand anyways.
Well, I explained to everyone that the, that those funds really were estimates. I mean, our revenues are estimates of what we're going to. It's not an actual.
Guaranteed revenue stream.
Exactly. And so, even though we say that, we still don't know what 2010 is going to look like for us, so.
We are speaking through our optimistic intention about the availability of revenue. And if we face the same things that our Commonwealth has faced, we might be in deeper straits, dire, more dire straits than we are already.
A much better choice of words.
Yes.
I know, too. Okay, that's, so anyway, that's.
So, that's where we are on that.
So, we will know by tomorrow. And actually, if it doesn't get approved, we don't really have any other options.
There aren't any other options.
There aren't any other options.
It'll have to close.
So, we'll have to close it.
Just to clarify, so what will, in effect, happen, assuming the EDC approves their request, that money will be granted out of the 500,000 that was approved in the budget for the EDC granting program. So, essentially, they'll have beyond that 480,000 to make whatever grants they want to make.
And with this.
It's fully appropriated, we don't need to go back to the Assembly.
So, with this, all of the odds and ends of the budget is done, right? As far as the intention?
The budget itself is done.
Right, with all these little threads that seem to be dangling. Okay, this is the last thread from that budget process, right? I don't know of any others.
I don't think there's any others out there.
So, the next step is, how can we get the towns to come up with suggestions on what they want to seek for regional programs so that we can start working on consolidating a request for supplemental budget in order to support those things? Because indeed, I don't think that, as Commissioners, we should let the Assembly off the hook with regard to supporting the, you know, our intent to make sure that regional activities, regional services go forward. That's very important to us.
Well, at the last Barnstable County Selectman and Counselors' meeting, I'm not sure who was there, you were there? We had that panel on regionalization, and there's, well, for instance, the Sealer of Wastes and Measures, you know, a lot of towns have sealers of wastes and measures. And that's another, Barnstable, the town of Barnstable does a lot of that. So, but there's, I think there's great interest in terms of the Barnstable group to want to look at this issue as well on, in terms of their agenda, that they, and maybe that's one of the places we can work with them, is just, is through that organization instead of trying to deal with each town individually.
Did you have a question?
I'll, I just, I just follow up to the rest area whenever you want.
Oh, yeah, please.
Whenever you want to get to that.
Well, why don't we finish?
Kind of shift gears.
Yeah, we shifted gears. We shifted gears onto regionalization, which is a topic we love, but.
I just wanted to clarify everything. So, the request goes to the full EDC tomorrow at four. Where are they meeting?
Eleven, twelve. Oh, no, they're meeting, aren't they meeting at the Commissions? Commission. I think they're meeting at the Commissions.
Commission meeting room. Meeting room tomorrow at four.
So, if that money is approved, that 20,000 would come from the license plate fund.
Yes, of the counties.
To the county.
The license plate fund that you folks already.
Administer.
Administer to them. Where would the money have come that the Assembly of Delegates rejected? They rejected that line item?
It's like two pieces.
They did reject the line item.
It's coming from the same place through a different route, that's all. It really is.
Not to put in a confrontational way, but it's a circumvention of what the Assembly did in a way. Because the Assembly said, "No, you're not going to get the money."
Here's why I wouldn't call it a circumvention, Matt, is because, as I said earlier, the Assembly's intent in taking that money, let's look at it this way, we, the Commissioners put two pieces out of the license plate into the budget, 500 for the EDC to do its grant programs, which they've been doing for years. We've usually been doing 400, but we had some more money because of the license plate auctions, we put some of that towards that. So, 500, plus we put in 37,000 in the budget to directly fund the license plate. That didn't go through the EDC and didn't go through the grant program. It was, we're using 37,000 license plate money to fund the rest area, and we've been doing that for the, you know, since 97, basically. So, what the Assembly did, I think their intent was, when they fully funded the EDC operations budget out of the license plate, as a, I hate to use the word SOP, but as a compromise to the EDC and the license plate fund, they removed that funding, the 37,000 that we had put there for the rest area, and in essence, that replenished the license plate fund of the 37,000. So, unappropriated, the license plate fund has 37,000 more in it because the 500 is still there. So, now, that rest area funding is coming out of the 500 initial appropriation anyways, so it's really like there's 480 to do in grants now because we're taking the 20 for the, like, for the rest area. So, I think the Assembly accomplished what they want. They put the 37 back in the license plate. We're not spending that.
If they put that 37 back in, did that not make the license grant program 537?
No, no. They took, it's, budget has two sides, it has a revenue and an expenditure, and they took the, as soon as they took the revenues for the 37 out, on the other side, and that's the part they didn't understand, that you have to take the expenditures out, otherwise the budget doesn't balance. So, once we did that, we didn't have any money to pay for the rest area, but it did leave as an unappropriated dollar in the license plate fund, that 37. Because before, we would have taken out 537, now we're just taking out 500, of which this is a piece of it.
See, I think it's just like taking the label off the money. The money is still there, they just took the label off it that said the Route Six Rest Area. And I don't think some of them realize that that's what they did. They said, you know, the EDC, if you don't fund the rest area, then you'll have more money for grants, essentially is what they were saying, but the money was still there. So, what we're, what this small group is doing is applying for a grant under the license plate to fund it just for this summer. So, it's an EDC grant, which relates to tourism, you know, which is what it's for.
And that's also taking that out of the overall grant money that would have been available for other grants, for something else that would have been more, some people would consider an economic development program or initiative.
Just my final question is then, that group that you were meeting with, Pat, did that include EDC members?
Dan Dray, no, no members, just the Administrator from EDC.
Is there any sense from Dan about his membership as to where you think they are at this?
Well, in the third meeting we had, which was last Friday, Dave Willard was there and also Dr. Alan White was there, and they seemed very supportive to the members.
I think it should be clear.
And they, well, David Willard is the Chairman, and Alan White is a member.
Although, although we would ask for a recommendation from the EDC.
Yeah, we get a recommendation and then the Commissioners approve it.
Have the authority to grant the money out of the license plate fund without the EDC. We have asked them to vet it out.
Right.
Okay, and to examine it and make a recommendation. That recommendation in process comes here, and we have the opportunity to support it or not support it.
So, they tomorrow, if they vote to support it tomorrow, it procedurally comes back to the three of you.
Yes, the following week.
And the other question that I have, that's a long-term question that we have, that we're going to be exploring as we're doing our legislative training, is, is the power within the Assembly to go within that department and take out certain programs that the Commissioners have deemed that's an executive power decision? And if they don't like the EDC, they can say, "We don't like the EDC," but can they go in under a legislative power as opposed to an executive power and cherry pick things out of programs?
I believe they can.
You believe they can?
Oh, yeah. They have line item, they have line item discretion on the budget.
Is that built into the charter?
I believe there's no prohibition of it in the charter.
I believe that the nuance is this, they can, they can elect not to fund a department, they cannot eliminate a department.
They can zero fund a department, though, you're right. Can they?
Now, when the EDC was founded, it wasn't founded as a department.
Because a department itself is created by an ordinance, you're correct. So, an ordinance would require your signature. Well, the budget's funded that way, too. But they, in their budget ordinance, they could zero fund a department.
Right.
They could call for its elimination.
I have a question on that.
I think this, I think they can.
And indeed, they could introduce an ordinance to that effect, but it would have to, but it would have to be an ordinance, it would go through the process of hearing.
But so does the funding, you guys have to sign it. If you don't sign it, it's good via.
Another comment I wanted to make about the funding on this, too, is that all of the Chambers who were there, and they were all Chambers from Yarmouth down to Provincetown, not from, not from Yarmouth to Borden. No, we didn't. Because most of the people who stop at that rest area are actually heading down Cape, they're not going the other direction.
There's people that leave.
So, I think, yeah, that's true.
And go to, I go to Falmouth.
I know, but it's not on your side of the road when you're going that direction. and they were all chambers from Yarmouth down to Provincetown, not from, not from Yarmouth to Moore. No, we didn't. Because most of the people who stop at that rest area are actually heading down Cape. They're not going the other direction.
There's people that leave.
So, so I think, yeah, that's true.
And go to, I go to Falmouth.
I know. But it's not on your side of the road when you're going that direction. But it's also for residents who were coming back from Boston or wherever. No, the point was that the other chambers who were not sure, who could not commit on Friday to funds, are most willing, if the summer economy improves, that they would be able to participate. And Mark has set up the account in such a way that if any one of the lower or outer Cape chambers wished to do that, there's a fund that they, that those monies can be put into. We'll take it from there. Just make it out to Barnstable County.
That money is available to help offset.
Well, that's one of the ideas that we thought of, is either sponsorship or, you know, Bob seems to think maybe donations box it up, even if people left a buck or somehow. You know, security is part of the issue, but those are some of the long-term strategies we need to kind of think about a little bit.
Including the state.
Including the state, yeah. They've got less money than us, though, right now.
You know, they actually closed two of the rest areas, you know, along that area. And one of them, I noticed, is sort of semi-opened up because the state, state is up there lurking. And just before you get off of exit, exit nine.
Yeah.
Well, I think the whole purpose of it was, you know, rest areas may end up having to be closed. Who knows in this economic climate? But to do it swiftly without any kind of notice didn't seem to me to be the way to go. And I thought if there was an opportunity to get people together to look for some short-term solutions, that we should try to do that.
Absolutely.
So if they work, they work, and hopefully they will.
And that was a lot of, a lot of hours.
Well, yeah, but you know, it's great people. And they, they had some of the best ideas I've ever heard, really. Going forward, there are a lot of good ideas that came out of that group. They were very, very interested. And all very, very, in very much in agreement that that rest area has to stay open. And if they can, and they will do something to participate in that because they feel it's a really important piece for tourism.
Well, thank you for doing that. And are you, you're going to be?
I'm going to be a rest area person.
Are you going to, are you going to do that? Well, we'll see. We can, if you want to draw a stra-.
She's going to take a shift out there.
Yeah.
I know. That's what I wanted to thank you, that you didn't volunteer us on certain shit.
Oh, no. Oh, I wouldn't volunteer, you know.
We have the weekend shifts. Do you have any updates on anything?
Oh, yeah, I went to, I had a great fun. I went to the tee-shirt, was it the presentation? And the, was it the donation that was given for the Yachts Foundation?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I did not make that.
There was a kid from Falmouth who was a lacrosse player, a big, giant, you know, kid that won, you know, I think he won third prize, you know, at Falmouth High School.
Oh, yeah?
It was really amazing. And the, the production value on some of the yacht was really great. And the donation, the artist, I forget his name, but I was very impressed with, you know, the painting. It reminded me of a verse from, was it Omar Khayyam? Indeed, repentance oft before I swore, but was I sober when I swore? And then, and then came spring and rose in hand my thread, their petted, and some pieces tore. It was really wonderful. I thought it was a great cocktail party, and I enjoyed going representing the, you know, representing the Commissioners.
Yes, thank you. One thing that we did not mention, and I felt rather remiss about it, was the passing of Fred Clausen.
Oh, yes, I meant to mention that, yes.
Fred Clausen was our Clerk of Court, longest-serving Republican. Clerk, sorry, Register of Probate. I should have not, I should have known that in my sleep since Anastasia and I bonded over that campaign. But he was the longest-serving Republican in the state.
Yes, he was.
And the, one of probably the longest-serving county.
Public officials?
Public officials, I would imagine, right? So that was, and he was very kind. And I got to know him last year a bit. And I felt very, very sad to know that he was probably battling that and his passing. So I want to remember Fred and remember all his service.
Unfortunately, he was such a private person, from what they told me at the wake. He had, I guess it was, the cancer had appeared eight weeks ago.
Oh.
And, and it just took him very suddenly. So it was, it was very.
Very unfortunate.
Very unfortunate. And very, and very swift. So, you know, from the part of, he had been the longest-serving, the longest-serving office holder, not just Republican, but the longest-serving officer in the state.
I think it was Republican.
Yeah, he was, he was the longest, yeah.
Longest Republican, yeah.
Republican.
Because I think, you know, who might have it be, this Dave, he's a, he's a representative from Bridgewater. Dave, he worked with the sheriff on a couple, I can't think of his last name.
But in any case, he was a very private person. So from what his, what his stepfather said was that he just didn't want anybody to know and just took the position that if I have this, you know, that's, that's it. He didn't want any, you know, any.
It's sad. How many people do you know that seems to retire and then like six months later?
Right.
Not even six months. Yeah, exactly.
Now, there was a request he made about putting a bench outside. He was, he said that he wanted to purchase it, but he wanted our support and permission. Do you remember that?
Do they have a plaque on it, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, there, it's already done. It's been done. Okay. I just want to make sure that that didn't happen, and he got that through, so.
What they said he didn't do was, they didn't have any ceremony for it. They said they were going to have some sort of ceremony.
Well, they should maybe do something.
We could do that. Well, you know, we could work with Anastasia and maybe.
Maybe we should do something like that for us to, in memory of him. We could give a little service to him. That would be good. Anything else, other than having great cocktail parties?
I have a couple of things.
I know, I know.
I mean, I could get to the wake, but I didn't get to the.
To the funeral.
I didn't get to describe what happened at the wake, which is, which is an event that I think that, you know, we need to recognize, you know, those people who have served, you know, served our county and served our community.
I think it's a good thing, too, though, also, you know, we were talking about, you know, what the protocol for the meetings should be. And we actually left your kind of regionalization discussion. Maybe we can come back to it. But we, I think we need to talk about the protocols and the meetings. I think it would be good to have like a county administrator's report and an assistant county administrator's report.
Yes.
And have that kind of as a, as a piece of the agenda item. But I don't know. Do you want to go back to the regionalization discussion now?
Well, yes, I would, because we're both going to the legislative.
Yes, maybe.
Answer that question.
Well, the town council is selecting, having the legislative thing on next Friday. And I wonder if we should have something prepared to, you know, to ask them of.
Well, I think asking, you have to, it's the manner in how you ask. And I think, you know what, you have to pick a, you know, they had a list certainly of things to consider. And it seems to be always this assessing one is rising to the top. Pick a battle and.
I would, I would put this on the agenda for next week with an outline of what it is we want to accomplish and what the specifics of our discussion are going to be.
And that is what we will.
Over the map.
If you each have some ideas about bringing back in terms of, you know, because I think you have to go to the towns with something concrete and say, if we were to analyze a regional assessing, would you sign up for it? And if you get some to say, yes, 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 then we take that and we go back to the Assembly and say, we're going to appropriate blah, 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 and I don't know how much it would cost. And we're going to analyze the ability to put together a regional assessing for these towns.
And again, well, we can discuss this. I think that we need to discuss that issue. And we do have to tighten up this agenda so that we stick with it and cover these things. So if there are thoughts on what you want to, what you want to say on that topic, Mark and Maggie and I were talking about the agenda and how it's flowing here. Maybe we should get it together through you, Mark, and we can write that agenda out together.
The other thing I think I would put on there is what we are, what is already being done on a regional basis so that we all know, all agree that, yeah, these things are regional.
Right.
Because there are some things that are already occurring.
Well, the budget.
We are a regional government. We offer a lot of regional services.
Yeah, but if we could just, like, list, the majority of really big ones that we know of being.
I have that. Actually, just for disclosure, I'm going to be meeting with the League of Women Voters on Friday. I've asked Bill, and actually, maybe Mike might do this piece of it, George, and, because you can't fit it all in in a couple of hours. I usually do an overview for a half an hour. And I have a list of all the stuff that we do. It's the same one that we did for Falmouth, basically.
Oh, is it another league?
It's, yeah, it's the Cape.
The Lower Cape League.
Yeah, Jerry Rappaport. And she said about 11 other league people are, so you're invited. It's going to start at 1:00.
They're called the Cape Cod Area League, as opposed to the Falmouth.
The Falmouth League. Falmouth does, Falmouth does everything on their own.
That's right. Falmouth is their own, their own thing.
So at 2:00, it's at 1:00, we'll do it in 11 and 12, and you're invited, if you want to just say hello.
Sharp collections.
Right.
So.
And I did want to just give an update, since there was a letter that I sent out for review and permission on Open Cape. Let us go there.
I modified the letter a little bit. And Julie, you took the copy, and I forgot to reprint it.
Okay, it's in my car. I don't have it in front of me.
There was just a, you know, issue with any concrete, what's the word I'm looking for? Commitment of a county asset. And I think that was the big issue, too.
Yeah, that was the, that was the issue that Commissioner Doherty brought up. What I was doing, since, since we as a board have expressed our support for Open Cape unanimously in all 15 towns, as we have visited them, as one of our initiatives that we support on a regional basis. And since we had the Open Cape people here and they gave us their presentation, and we, we offered them whatever support they could, they needed from us. They did call me as, as the chair to attend, they happened to be meeting over at the Four Seas a week ago Friday with Sharon Gillette, who is the governor's appointee to now head the Massachusetts Broadband Institute. So they were just talking about the various grants that were available, how, what was their best strategies of going after the monies of those grants. And she was, you know, just helping them, you know, if you can put this in there and that sort of thing. So I came in towards the end of that meeting because they were doing a lot of their own technical work. So I came in just to sort of, you know, reemphasize our support of this project. And it came up that they had identified the building here on the premises. And it is the BCI building here on the county complex that has the radio tower. It was the sheriff's dispatch building, correct, for the dispatch.
Yeah, dispatch, radio repair, and BCI, and they had a whole bunch of stuff.
So, so I guess at one point, when the, when the Cape Cod Commission was offered that building, when the sheriff still hadn't been out totally yet, hadn't given up control of that building, they looked at it as a possible site for them.
Paul looked at it. It's a little small.
It's a little small, but you know, when they, when we went downstairs and we had the blueprints with us, you could see that those, the concrete pillars on the very basement, which isn't really the basement, it's built on the ground floor, those are removable. Those are not structural. Those are not to keep the structure in place. So those were just put up there to just create other bays, working bays for the sheriff. So that, when he heard that, he was sort of like, oh. But it's kind of late in the game. The, the grants that they were proposing, that they have in front of them, they were thinking they would ask for a million and a half dollars, and it's through EDA, I believe. And, don't quote me on that acronym. I have to look it up. But there's one of the, it's one of the departments.
It's a Commonwealth, it's economic development.
Yeah, so it is ED, I think it might be EDA. Yeah, it is. It's an EDA grant, administration. So, so once they saw the building, which is about 11,000 square feet, and they, and what it has is this new generator, and it has some other item that they technically could use, and they wanted to know who owned the tower because they know that that's being leased out to various telecommunications. So all of those things fit. I mean, there are things that are there that they wouldn't even have to think about. Their grant, they would up the grant now, in looking at the size of the building and the things that need to be done, to a $3 million request. And what that would do is renovate that entire building for the county free of charge. And what they would request is just that basement or ground level floor because that's what they would do their communications out of. And then on the first floor, when you walk in there, it's set up really as those two separate buildings. There's a window over here with a conference room in it and kitchen in it and that sort of thing. And then there's a window here, like a reception window, and then there's a few offices in the back there. They would only ask for one half of that first floor, and then the rest of it is open, which could open up possibilities of moving the health department, you know, totally over there and get rid of those trailers. Sean was there, the buildings facility, Sean and.
John.
John wasn't there. I want to say, he begins with a D.
Or Don Reynolds?
It must have, maybe it was, it wasn't Dale. Is it Dale?
No.
No.
Okay.
All right. And I'm sorry for forgetting his name.
Facilities guy.
But he's a facilities guy, and he was very helpful, very good. Anyway, they gave us copies of the, of the, of the plans. And they looked at those, and it really was sort of like a win-win. And they were pursuing this grant, the sooner the better. They can get it in the queue for first, come first serve in some ways. So what I had done was draw up a draft letter, and I sent it for your approval and review before, I, I wanted to get it, get it out before today's meeting. I was informed that that wasn't really possible. But, and it wasn't anything, I wasn't committing. The letter does not commit the county to anything really but discussion. So, which, which I thought is still okay.
Well, what we can do is, well, Maggie's got some personnel matters that we'll have to do under executive session. When she does that, I'll go print the letter out. You guys can take a look at it, amend it if you want.
Right.
Then we can see if we can get that out.
Okay. And that's, and that's where we are with Open Cape. But they are, they are going forward. It will be a great, a great thing for the Cape. And what a lot of people don't understand about Open Cape is, you know, some people say, what's the big deal? You know, I get Comcast. If I want it, I get it, you know, down in the outer Cape. I mean, I have Comcast in Welffley. The problem for entities such as HOE or Coastal Studies is there's no problem in us getting information downloaded. It's the up, the up and out. It's the uptake and getting information out in large quantities that is impossible. So, so industries like HOE and MBL and Provincetown Coastal and different, and the universities cannot get that information. They cannot compete when there's bids going out, contracts, that sort of thing. So it's vital to economic development for the large entities and for any entrepreneurial entity that wants to come.
Yeah, because like right now, the bot, it can only handle a smaller volume and you have to be in a queue. And it only goes.
It's very slow.
And this way, it would allow it to happen globally almost immediately.
Correct. Okay. Do you have any questions?
I have a lot of questions.
Okay, I guess we'll have.
Well, I think we're going to take it up with the, we're going to take it up in an executive session.
Well, just take it up when you see the letter, because the letter's a little bit different than the original one that you saw.
Okay.
These are certain things we can't do without a process, so.
No, I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Attaboy's we can give, as we, we gave them all all over the place.
Right. Is there any else? Property is another matter.
Property is another.
And why, and what is the purpose of going to executive session for this?
Well, he has personnel.
This would be for the, it gives me a chance to go print the letter out, which I didn't do.
Okay, so we're, we are going to discuss this.
We are. I just have some other things to get to.
Are you ready to executive session?
Not yet. No, 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 no.
Return to open session to answer Bill's question.
Yeah, yeah. But right now, we have other things to do.
Okay.
All right, well, we're done?
No, I have a couple of things that we should do in public, in public session. Sheila, when you weren't here a few weeks ago, we voted to put you on the National, the Cape Cod National Seashore Advisory Commission, I think it is. One of the things George needs, George Price needs, is he needs a.
Short bio.
So we're not, yeah, he needs a CV or.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right. I know, you sent that to me, and I, and I was just trying to whittle it down.
So I need to send that out.
I'll get that out. All right. I have to get something over to the Commission, too.
The Commission for the summer is hiring a, either one or two interns. They're not paid positions, so they're volunteer labor. But they'd like to be able to reimburse their mileage-related expenses. We've done some tests, and I would recommend that you vote to allow that to happen.
You have the funds there?
Question. Is there, is it, are there expected amounts that they might request reimbursement for? Or is it not major travel?
I think they use their car to get to, I think a lot of these guys do traffic counts. So they monitor the traffic counters. So they take their vehicle. We don't have vehicles.
It's more local, for local mileage.
It's on the Cape, yeah. It's just driving from one point of the Cape to another point. So we reimburse them at our rate, 41 cents. So it's just to give them something in their pocket.
You need a.
I need to vote, yes.
I make the motion to reimburse the amount.
Okay.
And all in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Just, I think you received this email just to note that we were officially announced the award from the AmeriCorps program in the amount of $153,390 for, to recruit, train, and engage six residential AmeriCorps members in a boots-on-the-ground effort to respond to the troubled economy. And this has to do with the, we're partnering with Housing Assistance Corporation to do the foreclosure prevention and training. So we're going to train these kids to help people avoid foreclosure. So we did receive that line.
Excuse me. Earlier in the meeting, we were asked by an AmeriCorps member that is here with those folks to send a letter to get the, was it, get the funding from.
To get the.
I saw that, yeah.
Now, is that, people have to understand that's different than this. Now, is that, people have to understand that that's different than this amount here.
Yeah, that's the base funding for the AmeriCorps program, right.
Now, should people who are interested in support, in continuing support for AmeriCorps be aware that they, that their voice could be heard as well on this, you know, to support, to support the activity going forward? And are we going to, are we going to take a resolution to send a letter in support of it?
I would recommend that you authorize me to draft the letter and send it out. That's--
I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And while we're talking about sending out resolutions, the letters, have we sent out letters of, let's see, congratulations to the people who have won election?
Yes, the selectmen, I thought of that as well this week.
I don't think we have yet.
Okay, and I think that part of that would be to encourage them to maintain communication with us.
Right. So we need a list of everyone who's won.
These are all part of, people we need to educate.
Right.
So new or re-elected selectmen, right?
Mm-hmm.
We'll do that.
And also, in overlooking mail, we were requested, it was a request for Mary Otis Day of our contribution to that.
At least we gave $100 to that.
That's right.
Yeah.
Did we?
I haven't seen that.
I had that in my packet.
Is this for the Mercy Otis Warren?
Yes, Mercy Otis Warren.
Usually, we donate a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars and--
I think Alice George is the--
Yes, that's exactly who requested it, again. I will--
From the--
The Mary Otis--
Mercy.
I mean, excuse me, Mercy Otis, yes, committee. She's the chairperson of that. So that day is coming up, so we need to notify her.
Well, it's usually July 4.
Right. So I didn't want to forget that.
So you're voting to authorize a $100 contribution?
I would move that.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay.
Do we have any nominations for the Woman of the Year?
Well, usually, you know, it's already, the ship has sailed, yeah, because they do the award on the board.
Well, I thought I saw something in the papers saying that they were encouraging--
Maybe for next year?
No, I thought for this year.
Maybe, maybe, okay.
You know, usually Lou's in talking about that. I have, this is the first I've actually heard of it for this year.
If I may, do you know anything about the woman that--
They sent us a thing about a week and a half ago, that we put in the paper last week and this week, so they may still do it.
For this year?
Yeah, they may still do it, but they may have--
And I have one other thing. On June 15, at 5:00 here in the courtroom upstairs, there is going to be the ceremony of swearing in the new commissioners. Has nothing to do with Barnstable County. This is the Mass Commission on the Status of Women. They have representatives, they, we had to pass it through the legislature a year ago to actually have a Cape Cod chapter of that commission, of the Massachusetts Commission that went through, and that was voted on, I believe Senator Robert O'Leary helped, you know, carry that in. And so now there's representatives from the 15 towns that are going to be sworn in to that state commission, and they have asked us to host, you know, to have the venue here, which I thought was very nice, and so we're going to have it in the courtroom upstairs, which would be lovely, and then they're having a meeting, they're going to convene for their first meeting in the rooms 11 and 12 on the first floor. That will be 5 to 7 on February, on, excuse me, June 15. I know that you were interested in that, the one that they canceled recently, so put that in your calendar, Bill.
Oh, absolutely.
And we might even have--
And the commission's representative in the National Organization of Women, I think that's a wonderful thing to do.
Yes, that's right, right. And they haven't booted you out yet.
I just have one other thing, and it's good news, I've got the preliminary, I don't have the final contract, and it's for 2.83, $2,832,560 for, anybody want to guess? Guess who?
The sheriff.
Come on, the sheriff, who said the sheriff?
Me.
Yeah.
Oh, before we--
So he should be all right through the end of the year.
Oh, we got the supplemental, didn't we?
The supplemental.
There was one contact that I did get from the fire chiefs.
Yes.
Have they talked to you till?
Yes, if, I was, I was going to attend that meeting today up at the State House. What has happened is, actually, the sheriff called me, I was talking about something else, and he said, just to let you know, this is what I'm going to do, so you might hear something, and, you know, that, because it was--
You go, uh-oh.
--in the context of all these other things, that's right. He's done that twice now, so, but at least he calls and tells. But, and he was right on this. He is responsible for the dispatch, you know, the emergency dispatch to, from the EMTs to hospitals.
To notify the hospital.
To notify the hospital that there's a patient's coming, and this is what's going on with the patient, and that sort of thing. He picks up the bill for that. It comes to over a half a million dollars a year for him. In counties around the state where the sheriff also does that dispatch service, the hospitals pay a portion, if not all, of that cost of the dispatch. And I guess he's having a problem with our local area, I don't know all the particulars, so I'm not going to say, but I guess there's a reimbursement issue, and it has been for some time, and like everyone else, he's trying to figure out how he can save some money or how someone helped. And so he stated he wasn't going to do that service anymore since July 1. And even though he's always had sort of like, you know, we're with you on this, you know, we support, you know, your efforts, that was about all he got, which is, you know, kind of typical.
Well, he approached Steve Abbott before he left two years ago, with Steve Abbott being about two years--
It was at least two years.
Yes, and Steve Abbott basically gave him, oh, yeah, that's a great idea, but then he left.
Right, and then didn't do anything about it.
But the hospitals have an obligation under statute to record all the calls coming in. The concern that the fire chiefs have is that they might just use a cell phone to, you know, to provide the communication and not have the reliability that, you know, that is in the radio system. So I hadn't, when I heard that, I suggested to--
Chief Russell?
No, it wasn't Russell, it was the, Mark Foley. Mark Foley, that perhaps in his position as a member of the Fire Chiefs Association and also the Fire Training Academy, that he discover what the intention of the hospital was to meet that service, and ask, and I said, you'd have to know that before you could discover what you needed to do in order to respond to it. So if he had done that, sooner rather than later, when they go to this meeting-- When is that meeting?
It was today. They did meet with--
Right, and we couldn't go because we're here.
We're here, and I was going to run up, it was at 10:00, and, you know, my morning was a comedy of errors, I guess, for lack of a better word, but, so I couldn't make that meeting, but we are supposed to speak with, and visit, I figured we could roll it into a tour of the jail, which we haven't done, and we're supposed to do, you say, and a follow-up discussion on what's going on, so it's going to be either Friday or maybe Monday. Since we're going to be discussing business, we might have to move it to a Monday, and Friday's looking worse for me, as it turns out. So--
If we just had a tour, that's not a posted meeting, but if the three of us are going to talk to the sheriff about business--
And get an update on this meeting, whether we do any action, I doubt if we--
If you guys know about being in a place where you might decide business--
Discuss business.
Got posted.
Okay.
So we can't do it.
Say things to do as posted.
Right. So we will post that when we, when we have it definitely scheduled, and hopefully they have a friendly resolution already made. The other thing, I sort of hesitated in thinking about it, is if I show up as the county representative, what am I going to offer, if anything, and I didn't want to have to, and I couldn't offer anything.
I think you were wise not to go--
So I said, on second thought, maybe we'll hear what was suggested.
Well, just so you know, George Russell has called me, and I have not, we've exchanged messages yet, because Mark Foley, you know, because the fire chiefs think, well, if the sheriff goes to state, you guys are going to save all this money, so I have to kind of set that.
They're afraid that this is the beginning of the sheriff doing something to the dispatch, and I don't believe that that's his intention at all. I think he's just trying to get attention, that everyone has, you know, given a lip service on--
The major beneficiary of this is the patient, and the second beneficiary is the hospital emergency room.
Right.